I'd like to make the motion to open the September seventeenth zoning board of appeals. Please rise for the pledge. Oh, second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, a couple of administrative items. We make decisions at the end of the night. Everyone's welcome to stay around. We'll call you, I'm gonna do a roll call real quick, which would be pretty quick. You guys just say you're here, then we'll call you up. You'll come in, you'll sign in, you'll give the court reporter your name and address. We'll swear you in, and then we'll, you'll hear the applicant, and then we'll move on to the next one. All right? There, if anyone wants to be heard from the audience, we have a microphone. It is three minutes. If someone has said something that someone else said before, we take it all into consideration. So you don't have to keep going over that same thing. I don't think we have a lot of people here, so that's the case. So we have a tenure item, Varsjavsky? Varsjavsky, yeah. Maroni?
Yes.
River View Holdings.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like a motion to open up Varsjavsky.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Come on up.
I have an order I'd have to be posting and this is a certificate letter to correspondence to this project.
Straight off the golf course.
John. John Perkins, eighteen Sycamore Drive, Hopkins College.
You don't swear, right? Swear to God?
I do.
All right, thank you, Roger.
First is a letter from the Rockland County Department of Planning dated September fourth, twenty twenty five. Item is Varsjavsky, seventy-two Shiler Road. Variance permit the construction of a caretaker's cottage in the rear yard of a single-family dwelling on five point five-three-two acres in the R eighty zoning district. Variance requested for minimum rear yard. Previously approved, fall court is proposed in the southeastern corner of the site. The County of Rockland Department of Planning has reviewed the above item, acting in the terms of the above GML powers and those vested by the County of Rockland. Charter, aye. The Commissioner of Planning hereby remand the local decision. GML section two thirty-nine referral was submitted as a continuation item for submission that we previously received on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. GML twenty-five dash zero two seventy-two. There have been no discernible changes made to the site plan. Proposed actions deemed to have no significant county-wide or intercommunity impact under New York State General Municipal Law two thirty-nine, therefore the action is a local decision. The following additional comment is offered strictly as an observation and is not part of our general municipal law review. The Board may have already addressed this point or may disregard it without any formal vote under the GML process. The site plan includes construction diagrams that are overlaying on the plot plan and cover a portion of the site. Separate sheets should be provided to ensure that all site features can be seen on the plan. And it's signed Douglas J. Schutz, Acting Commissioner of Planning. And then there is a letter from the Rockland County Center for Environmental Health dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have received an application and plans as prepared by Thomas W. Scrabble P.E. revised through March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five for the above referenced project. Comments are as follows. Application is to be made to the RCBOH for review of the straw water management system for compliance with the county mosquito code. If you have any questions regarding the matter, do not hesitate to call. Signed, Brandon Durant, Ph.D., Assistant Public Health Engineer. And an email from John Perkins to Caitlin Beckman dated Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-five. It's a follow-up. Hi Caitlin, I've attached the corrected narrative. If you need anything else, let me know. And good afternoon, oh, I guess this is in response to Caitlin's.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, John. This was Caitlin, September tenth, twenty twenty-five, at five eighteen P.M. Good afternoon, John. It's been brought to my attention while reviewing the updated Godric information that the narrative that you provided has a discrepancy in it. I've attached a copy of the narrative provided for your convenience, but says the building could be used as a pool cabana. And then the last sentence says the building is not intended to be used as a pool cabana. Please have the statement prepared to work with me. Thank you. My name's Caitlin Beckman. And here is the project number two. So, September tenth, twenty twenty-five. Proposed works include design of a new one-story wood-stick-framed accessory building on slab, on slab, on grade foundation. The approximate dimensions of the building would be forty feet wide by twenty-five feet four inches in depth. The proposed building should be used as a pool cabana. Project is previously reviewed by the Board on July sixteen, twenty twenty-five as application ZBA twenty-five dash nineteen. After the advice of the Building Inspector assigned to the project, we originally presented it as a caretaker cottage as it is permitted in that zone as per right. Location of the structure will be located adjacent to the existing pool in the rear yard. Drawings have been revised from the original drawings to reflect no cooking appliances in the structure. It should be noted, there are no sleeping rooms, and it is not other than a pool cabana. Signed, John Perkins, R eighty N C A R B. ZBA twenty-five dash nineteen, application of Michael Varsjavsky, owner for variances from zoning code chapter forty-three, R eighty district, column eleven. Rear yard fifty feet required with seventeen point two feet proposed for a pool cabana in the rear yard and an existing single-family dwelling. Premises are located at seventy-two Shiler Road, well, New York, air defined in Orange Town tax map as section sixty-five point one-five, lot one, lot twelve point two, in the R eighty zoning district. So, you already explained it, but could you tell us why you're back here this evening?
Absolutely. To recoup kind of where we were and where we are. Initially, we presented it as a caretaker's cottage because in speaking with the Building Inspector, Rick Oliver, he had come up with the idea that it would be just as easy to go for a variance for a caretaker's cottage as opposed to doing an accessory building in the rear yard, so on and so forth. So, rather than go through the whole semantics of putting a cooking appliance in it, we're just creating a pool cabana, and we're putting it in the rear yard to simplify everything. So we took out any cooking appliances. It's intended exclusively for the use as a pool cabana. There's no sleeping rooms, there's no cooking appliances. It's essentially for pool cabana use only.
It's not, it's in the same location where you were gonna put it before, is that correct?
Yes. The, that was also something I spoke to Rick Oliver about. The buffer was designated on the proposed subdivision map for the dwelling. You'll note on the, on the site plan that it denotes one hundred-foot buffer for the dwelling. It was exclusively for principal dwelling buffer from the property line, to keep it away from the park. Right.
It's not on the originals. So that's my issue, right? So this is more of a question legally, right? Because, because I wanna make sure that in this buffer zone, there's already a pool, there's already a piece of patio, there's a shed. You know, so it came to, you know, my concern was that it says it's in the buffer for dwelling. I don't know if that meant any dwelling, so this is my point there, or the main dwelling. It doesn't really clarify that.
Yeah, when I spoke with Rick, he kinda said, oh, this is, I don't know. He said it was-
I respect what he may say to you, but that doesn't make it, if I approve, if we as a board were inclined to approve something, and somebody comes back later on and said, well, you saw it was in a buffer even though these other things were there already. I just wanna make sure that everyone is going forward for you, for your client and for us. I'm not really sure about that.
It's ambiguous. I would say that's a reasonable interpretation, is that it applies just to the dwelling and not to the pool cabana.
Excellent, okay. So I just, you know what I mean?
Understood.
Court was previously approved before? Of court?
Oh, the basketball court, yeah.
That's because that's the one on the buffer zone.
That's true, too. Exactly. Do you have any questions? Do you have anything else?
Is there any reason why you couldn't move the cabana to the south side of the pool, just to get it off the property line a little bit more?
There's essentially, the relationship to the pool was kinda critical to kinda keep it directly adjacent to the pool. If we moved it, it would kinda change the orientation, for lack of a better term, turn us back to the house. So we'd be looking at the side, from the back of the house, we would be looking at the side of the pool cabana. And not to mention, there's kind of a open grass area that they use as a kind of planting area.
So what's to the east of that? If this is north, right, what's, is that north plant? Is that showing north? The plant setup is north?
Yeah.
On the top of the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what's on the east side?
East side over here, this is the park.
Wanna make clear to, to show it's all park.
So, yeah, the pool is here, and we're trying to kinda keep everything together, so it's not kinda like spread out around the house. And immediate relationship. Critical, we kinda try to keep that actual relationship.
Does anyone from the audience wish to be heard on this? Oh, once, twice? Make a motion close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I make a motion, open Maroni?
Second.
All in favor?
I have an order I'd have to be posting and this is a certificate and a letter to correspondence for this project.
My name is Michael Maroni. I reside at Five Sunrise Lane in the hamlet of Pearl River, town of Orange Town.
His right hand, please? Swear to God? Nothing but troops that we got?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
ZBA number twenty-five dash thirty-nine, application of Michael Maroni, owner for variances from zoning code chapter forty-three, R fifteen district, group M, section five point two-two-seven. Accessory structures permitted in side yard and rear yard with front yard proposed for an existing shed in the front yard at an existing single-family residence. Premises are located at Five Sunrise, Sunrise Lane, Pearl River, New York, and identified on the Orange Town tax map as section sixty-nine point one-eight, block three, lot twenty-three, in the R fifteen zoning district. All right, Mr. Maroni, can you just tell us a little bit about why you're here?
Yes. I was actually having a discussion with a friend of mine who had advised me that he built a shed. And the shed was a hundred and fifty square feet. And I said, I thought that the town code was you needed a permit for anything over a hundred square feet. And he said, no, they changed the town code. So I called to verify that, and I was told that was in fact the case. I know ignorance is no excuse, but I was not aware of living on a corner property that both sides of my yard that touch the street consisted of a front yard. And when it was explained to me after the fact, when I, when I got the notice of violation from the Building Department, you know, I totally understand. You know, something on the street is a little different than being in somebody's normal backyard that's not on a corner because you wanna keep up the appearances of the town. That being said, we went to great lengths to make sure that this was not a hindrance to the appearance of the community in any way. I brought here a packet that, I have one for each of the board members that we can go through. And basically-
Thank you.
Yeah, I have-
Well, we just wanted for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the, the first one is a view from the sidewalk, forty feet east of the shed on Orangeburg Road. It's not even visible. My neighbor, because his house faces Orangeburg Road, has the green tulia arbivides in the front of his property. We did the same thing on the roadside of the shed to minimize the view of the shed from the road, but we also put them further back recessed onto the property to not block anybody's view from either driveway. The second picture shows a view of the shed from the intersection of Sunrise Lane, looking east. As you can see, it's set far, far enough back off the road where it's not a hindrance to traffic in any way, shape, or form. The third one is a closer picture of the shed, so you have an idea of what it looks like. The fourth one is a picture of the shed at night, those are solar lights. And then what I did was I went around the neighborhood, basically to explain why I thought it was okay to put the shed there. This is around the corner. The next picture is on twenty Sickletown Road, on the corner of Acacia Terrace. You can see there's a shed there, right next to a fence on Sickletown Road. The next one is up the street from me on Orangeburg Road, on the corner of Elm Street. That shed is clearly in the front yard. The next one is a little further up Orangeburg Road, on the opposite side of the street, four sixty-five Orangeburg Road. That shed is right next to the house. And the next one is a picture from the rear on Rowan Road of the same shed. A little further up the street, on the corner of Mountain View Avenue and Orangeburg Road, you can see behind the fence, there is another shed. They also have the plants there. The next one is a jungle gym on the corner of South Norishon and West Norishon. And the last one is eighty-five Earhart Road on the corner of, I believe it's Pierce Parkway or-
Yeah, I just drove past that today.
So I, I mean, I, I'm just, I kinda feel like a little embarrassed that I wasn't aware of the law and having to be here. In addition, I brought in five letters from my neighbors saying that they have no objection to the, to the shed, that- I'm sorry?
Are these all the same letters? It's a-
Yeah, I typed up the letter, and I asked them to review it and see if they had any objection to it, and I had five neighbors sign it.
So I'm gonna read one into record and reference the fact that they're all the same, but I'll give each name if you don't mind. So, to whom we may concern, I'm a neighbor of the Maronis that reside at Five Sunrise Lane in Pearl River. I'm aware that they are applying for a variance for the shed they built on Orange, on Orangeburg Road, on the Orangeburg Road side of their property. I have no objection to the shed, which is already in place. Furthermore, it does not impede any view of traffic from Sunrise Lane or any other angle. The appearance of the shed enhances their property, not detracts from it. I do not feel that the shed or its location is a hindrance of any kind, and have no objection to it. Respectably submitted. And the first one is Alexandra Farrell, two thirty-three West Norishon, Pearl River, on a Dwyer, twenty-one Sunrise Lane, Pearl River. Twelve Sunrise Lane, oh, Diane Darty's, twelve Sunrise Lane in Pearl River. David Leighton, fifteen Sunrise Lane in Pearl River. And Brendan Murphy, twenty Sunrise Lane in Pearl River. Okay. I don't know.
I'm sorry?
I mean, if it's never, it doesn't look like it had ever been chosen before, right? In any of the documentation we had. But I think it just, we've done this recently where we've just given- Yeah. It shows a, it's four foot two to the front, but that's, that's not the property line, right? That's the buffer? As it doesn't need a street line, right? That's four foot two, it doesn't need a street line, really. Because the property line is up by the road, so it's much further away than five feet.
This one has eighteen foot ten.
Oh, there you go. That's a drawing.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what I mean, so that's fine. So, either way, it's more than five foot on this, even though it's the front yard, right? It's a good point.
I did, I did ask-
The address is designated as Sunrise Lane, right? But the shed is on this Orangeburg Road side, which would be considered, because it's a corner, it's two front yards. Can you designate that one side if it hasn't been done before? No, right?
I don't think so, no. I don't think you need to do that. In fact, I don't think you should do that. He has two front yards.
He has the ability, right? Okay. Yeah, we haven't done it before, but I just wanna make sure that we're not seeing, missing anything. Okay.
I'm good.
Does anyone from the audience wish to be heard on this? Come once, or twice? Okay, make a motion close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Stick around if you want, or you call Caitlin in the morning, up to you. Yeah. What'd you say? Oh, you're not gonna be there? All right, call somebody in the morning. Okay, I can make a motion to River View Holding LLC.
Second.
All in favor? Come on up, please.
Is it okay if I borrow your easel?
Sure, sure.
I have an order I'd have to be posting and this is a certificate. I have a letter of correspondence, and this is Volker's favor for this project.
Would you sign in and tell us your names, please?
Sure. My name is Margaret Garcia.
And mine is Walter Orell. We're both from Orell Garcia Architects. Oh, sure. A, R, B.
All right. Swear to God?
Yes. So this is a email from Julie Katz, dated Wednesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. The subject is variance twenty-nine dash thirty-one Ludlow Lane, Palisades. Reference opposition to variance, application ZBA twenty-five dash forty, River View Property Holdings LLC, twenty-nine dash thirty-one Ludlow Lane, Palisades, New York. Dear members of the Rockland County Appeals, I am the owner of the adjoining property to the above referenced parcel, and I respectfully submit my strong opposition to the variance requested, ZBA twenty-five dash forty. The applicant seeks relief from both floor-to-air ratio limits and rear yard requirements in order to construct a four-foot by eight-foot greenhouse. This project is deeply problematic for several reasons. One, the structure is industrial in scale and out of character. A greenhouse of this size, thirty-two hundred square feet, is far beyond the intent of accessory residential structures. It resembles a commercial agricultural installation more suited to an industrial or farm district, not an R eighty residential neighborhood. Allowing such an outsized structure erodes the protections that zoning agencies provide. Two, encroaching on setback protections. The applicant is explicitly seeking to intrude into required rear yard setbacks. These setbacks exist to ensure light, air, privacy, and buffer space between neighbors. Throwing them in this case directly negatively affects my property and all in the Sneadens Landing neighborhood. The project will create an eyesore and diminish the value of my home. Three, harm to the neighborhood's character and property values. Our neighborhood is quiet, low-density residential, historically protected, and environmentally sensitive community. This greenhouse, especially given its visibility, will dominate views, reflect light, and permanently alter the natural state. This threatens not only my property value, but also the broader character of Palisades as a historic residential family. Four, no demonstrated hardship. The applicant has not shown any legitimate hardship as required for a variance. Running an oversized greenhouse is a matter of preference, not necessity. The zoning code cannot be rewritten parcel by parcel simply to accommodate inclusion. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the Board to deny this variance. Approval would set a dangerous precedent undermining the town's zoning protections and harming adjoining residents like myself. Thank you for your time and consideration. I plan to attend the hearing on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, to voice these concerns in person. Sincerely, Julie Katz, eleven Lawrence Lane, Palisades, New York, one and a half.
Okay. ZBA twenty-five dash forty, application of River View Property Holdings LLC, owner for the variances from zoning code chapter forty-three, R eighty districts, group A, section three point one-two. Column number four, floor-to-air ratio, point ten allowed, point one-one-seven proposed. Column number eleven, rear yard, fifty feet required, thirty-five feet proposed for a forty-by-eighty greenhouse, forty-foot by eighty-foot greenhouse. Premises are located at twenty-nine to thirty-one Ludlow Lane, Palisades, New York, and identified on the Orange Town tax map as section eighty twenty-zero-six, there's one dash thirty, in the R eighty zoning district. Yes, this is going down on this property, on this proposal?
Sure. First of all, I, I wanna just sort of establish a little context here. This, this project is asking for a variance on the, on the FAR, and it is asking for a variance on the rear yard. But what I've outlined here is the lot thirty, which is a, is a component of this whole property. This, this owner owns this, and this, and this, a total of thirteen acres, over thirteen acres. This plot is like one point eight acres. It's just the way it was divided when the property was purchased. So this rear setback is actually a, a sort of an artifact of the way this was subdivided a long time ago. And so in citing this greenhouse, which, you know, it is a large greenhouse, part of the reason, if you go to the site, it, it makes sense because there are existing buildings on the site, existing historic buildings. And this, this seems like a more appropriate site, and it's surrounded by the owner's property. It's not, it's not really adjacent, it's, it's not a, it's not an encroachment on, on, it's only on the owner's property. It's because of this jog. And in the future, I think if they simply continued these lines here and-
So the owner owns the Lawrence?
Yes.
His owner owns the Lawrence? All the property to Lawrence, the streets to Lawrence?
This, this is another property.
No, no, going that way, I think it is, right? Isn't Lawrence property?
Lawrence is on that.
Lawrence is this way, actually. This is Lawrence, this is Ludlow?
Yep.
They do not own the property of Lawrence?
No, but they own it from Lawrence to the west, right?
Yes, everything here and here.
But each of those are individual plots? They're not one lot?
Well, there's, there's, there's three altogether. There are three subdivisions within this whole property.
Which they went eventually to have as one property, but it's much more complicated.
We were advised it was gonna take too long to do this, and they're very anxious to get this greenhouse in on their plan. And just, just a word about the greenhouse. It is, it is large, but I wanted to just, this is a fragment, actually. I mean, this, this site plan shows sort of the intention of the proposed landscape work that is gonna be very intensive on this site, basically planting trees and slight recontouring of the land, but basically it's, it's plantings. The idea is it's supposed to be, the client has described it to us as a, as an arboretum or a botanical garden in its nature. So, so this is basically illustrating, as I said, just a, just a little bit of what, what is intended for the whole property ultimately. It's gonna be an anti-growth design. But what I wanted to show, but we-
Does it, does it, just one question. Thirty-one point two is below that, is he own that as well?
Yes.
They own that as well?
That's right, that's right here. This is all, this goes up to the month.
Let me just subscribe these properties to you?
Yeah, can you kinda, because I wanna-
Would you do it, please? Okay, this, this property right here is, has the large residence here, which is called the- Needa Hurst Castle. That's right.
Thirty, so that's lot thirty-one point one?
Yes, that's basically right there.
Okay.
And that has a lot of little follies and cottages, not cottages, but just little, little pieces of property. Wooden shed, there's something that used to be a, actually, right now it's, it's used as a birdhouse. Well, and there's the main entrance, which is this large lawn with sculptural trees. Property here, the shorter, the angier one, is very hilly. Goes straight up into the mountain, and there's lots of woods in there back there. This piece of property here has a barn, has the caretaker's house right there. It was the only piece of property that we felt was suitable for having another kind of accessory building that would, the house and the residence.
Mar, I just wanna, the, the purpose of the greenhouse is actually to propagate plants for this whole landscape design, which encompasses the whole thirteen acres. And it's also to actually grow organic vegetables, because one of the property owners has a-
Very incredible condition that needs monitoring.
Very incredible condition that needs dietary restrictions.
Yeah, so it's, they have a dietary
Condition.
Condition, so so that that's actually the purpose of the greenhouse. And so, I mean, we brought this site plan because this this is a view, an internal view, if you're inside the property here. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, right here, this is view, that is this, the large piece right there, which is
And this is looking back up the hill, which is where we were talking about going up the hill there. This is a view from B, is the view from up there.
Up here.
That's a separate entrance there, B?
This is, this is the
Yeah, there are two two entrance roads.
Yeah, the utilitarian entrance, and this is the main to the to the property. This view right here is the one where you see
Is this.
Can you tilt that towards us a little bit?
Well, B is the bottom left.
Yeah.
I just want to see C, that's from the road.
Where's the C view on that picture?
C view is under the entrance.
Okay, got it.
So it's not visible from the road?
It's not visible from the road.
Does the C view have the, does the C view have the greenhouse design in it?
You can't see it.
You can't, you can't see it.
I mean, you can't see it.
But you can't see, but it's there.
You can't see it. The greenhouse, as shown on this drawing, or this
That's just two hundred fifty-six feet from the road?
Correct.
That's the entrance I saw today, right? That's the service entrance I view.
Well, this, yes, yeah, it's a service.
Yes, they were bringing in some terrarium, some plants today when I was
And that's the greenhouse, a little bit visible from B, right? That's the greenhouse right there.
It's essentially behind that existing building. And that was also, that was why it was problematic to cite this, because, you know, we didn't want to get too close to the buildings and basically, the topography just sort of dictated where the
And we didn't want to put it anywhere close to the main entrance of the house, because that's that's much more lawn and and area. Whereas this back here is not open, there's lots of, there's lots of trees. In fact, this tree right here, we definitely wanted to keep that tree. And if we were to move this thing further up so that it was within the variance, it was actually going to make us take the tree out. Because it's it's right there. Added everything too much.
The owner's intention is basically to keep trees, but just add a lot of additional ones and plantings and it's, I mean, they have a very sort of conservationist kind of ethic.
What is the height of that?
It's twenty feet, yeah. Twenty feet to the ridge.
So they'll be keeping some of the, they'll be keeping some of the warmer weather plants inside the greenhouse over the winter, is that the per- half of the purpose of it?
Yeah, it's to to sort of, as I said, to propagate new plants and ones that are sensitive to cold.
Any other ones?
Well, this is just, this is a drawing, I mean, some of, we did these boards, because we're going to be going before the historical board.
Okay, so what I would like you to do, if you can, is explain from Lawrence, the property that's on the furthest point on the right. If you go back to the first drawing, please.
Lawrence, actually, Lawrence is way, way, way down the hill.
Well, it's on the right.
Yes, yes.
So I did some calculating, as you go up to the pool, it it's, you're going uphill.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
I actually calculated that at about eighty feet. So that it increases in length, goes up
Yeah, from the
It's at about ninety-eight feet at the elevation of Lawrence, and it goes up to over two hundred feet at the peak before the pool, right at the pool.
That's right.
So from Lawrence, you couldn't possibly see the other side of that space, right? Just wanted to make sure that I was reading that correctly, because the elevations are on that drawing. Would you submit it, would you guys submit it for record?
That's right, yes.
Okay. Then it actually starts dropping back down towards there, but it does pick up again because of the mountains area on the bottom.
It's right here, it's up the mountain, yeah.
That was the main thing, I just, when I was there, you could see that how that went up and back down.
I have a question, there was some concern about lighting, so is this going to be lit at night? In the letter from the neighbor? Um, there's no intention for it to be lit at night, because, you know, it has enough sunshine during the, that's why it's cited, you know,
I mean, it's not, it's not meant to be a feature, you know, to be shown.
It would have to have utility lights, so people, by code. Well, it would have to have utility lighting by code, but it's not going to have any kinds of floodlights, any outside shiny out or anything of that nature, right?
Or any lights that would facilitate growing anything?
No, it's not going to be hypermarket.
No, it's it's basically oriented, you know, south.
But what's the, so it's pretty, it's a, you know, the far is is an increase, right?
The FAR is point one one seven, so it's sites on, you know, a hundred acre over, which is about twenty point twenty. But as as we said earlier, this
So that's about ten percent, it's less than ten percent?
Yes.
This this jog
It's one point, it's one point seven percent.
Yeah, it's one point seven.
This whole thing is coming as a result of this jog and the in the way that it was laid out whenever that was. If this if this were simply filled in, that the property that they own, the all rounded, we we wouldn't have any issue with FAR or or the setback. It's just, it's just that little quirk is sort of sponsoring this.
Is it right now?
I'm good, yeah.
We're going to ask the neighbors to be aware. Does anyone, because I think we do, people, you know, do that? So anyone from the audience wish to be heard on this? So what we're going to do is have you go to the microphone, state your name and address, and then I'll swear you in, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, three minutes.
We have a three minute timeframe. And if anyone says, if you're going back, if someone else is going to go back up and we've heard something already, we take it all into consideration, so anyway. What, no, you said, go ahead.
No, you don't, what's your name? Uh, good, my name is Leslie Smolin, and
Your last name, Smo.
S-M-O-L-A-N. Mic on.
Is it on? Oh, yikes, okay, I'm backing up.
What's your address?
My address is seven, seven Lawrence Lane, Palisades. I've lived there for thirty-seven years, I own
Let me swear again, then you can say everything.
Go ahead.
Swear to tell the whole truth, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but yourself, yeah.
I do, yes, I do.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so my husband and I bought seven Lawrence Lane in nineteen eighty-eight, and then nineteen ninety-nine, we bought three Lawrence Lane. And they're both his, on the historic record, and we've been committed stewards of the Palisades community. We we certainly like anybody coming into the neighborhood who's going to do something responsible. So we, I have not met the new neighbors and have not, they have not shared their plans with me to date. So however, I'm here with some other concerns I wanted to have you evaluate as you think about this application. So since the property's recent purchase, that steep hillside, which you just referred to, this, I thought it was fifty, ninety, seventy feet, literally about both my property and Julie's property, and the owners have now clear cut that entire section, which has been forested for the thirty-seven years that I have lived there. That's a, that's a, again, seventy foot elevation at a really short distance. In recent years, our areas experienced increasingly strong storms, super storms, standing in twenty twelve, record-breaking rainfall from Hurricane Ida, twenty twenty-one, July twenty twenty-three, and this past July. Even with the natural forest buffer that we had, we suffered two feet of water in our basements, pools were totally flooded with mud, and damage to the established landscaping. Now that this natural drainage system has been removed, I'm already seeing impacts to the foliage on the property. Use and other things are dying because of that. So my concern is, the steep slope served as a natural water management system. The trees and undergrowth absorbed groundwater and prevented erosion. Now it's gone. I'm concerned about increased erosion from exposed steep slope, amplified stormwater runoff affecting all the properties on Lawrence Lane, and potential for more severe flooding. What I'd like, what I'm requesting, I want to emphasize that I'm not necessarily opposing this project. I'm simply asking for proper planning to protect all of our properties. Specifically, a comprehensive site survey that documents the current post-clearcutting conditions, professional drainage engineer assessment to evaluate runoff impacts, mitigation recommendations, whether retention systems, drainage infrastructure, and/or other solutions, and a detailed landscape plan. So this is, there's a lot of water, now we're talking about trees, greenhouses, water, and as it is, they've now clear cut the entire landscape between this retaining wall that's been there forever and Lawrence Lane. And then, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Is there, she has to sign it and date it, right?
I also have some photographs of the, yeah, that's helpful.
I don't, hmm, I, well, let's let's address that now, right? The clear cutting isn't anything that has to do with us here, right? And in fact, by right, they can't clear cut unless there was something architecturally different, just but we, that has nothing to do with our cardboard, right? Which is fine, so we really can't address that piece of it. In regards to the building structure, if the, they go for permits and they're deemed to have to have drainage, or a hole, whatever be the case, that's part of their application for permit, that they have to abide by, right? We can't, we can't dictate that, right? Because we aren't here to dictate, to discuss a change in the variance, or a change in the law, basically, as a variance, right? So we can't dictate to them, say you have to mitigate the water.
Do you think this would be better addressed by the planning board? Could you refer it?
I, it's been the planning board, but it's here, it may be going back to the planning board, I don't believe it is or not. You're going to the architectural review board next? So there you can have this, that's the store board, those are your next
Yes, there's jumping erosion.
I can talk to you about it, because I
Okay, yep, okay. Do you have anything on that or no?
Yeah, this board cannot, thanks to the planning board, it has to go to the planning board.
Does anyone else from the audience wish to be heard? No, I'm not going to wait. All right, choose who goes first, if you care. All right, hold on, your name and address, please.
Julie Katz, eleven Lawrence Lane, Palisades, New York. What else do, okay, right.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I'm going to do my best, yes. I stand by everything Leslie said. As a neighbor who lives directly below Niederhurst and adjoin that lot that you guys talk about.
It's under the
All good, because we can't talk water all that much. But the way I understand it is, with these three lots, when they were subdivided, it was very intentional. Because that four acre lot that comes down the valley towards us, down on Lawrence Lane, is never to be developed on, and they intentionally kept it as its own to prevent some, I wasn't part of it, predates me. I wish one of our other neighbors were here, which brings up a different point. There was not enough notification about this happening. It was, there are four little signs on on this property alone. No fencing, not on my fence, Leslie, I don't believe you got anything on your fence line. I received my blue notice Saturday in the mail. That's not enough time, people are away, we live on private lanes, we have to get our mail. At at worst, I'm going to ask you, could you please roll this to next month? Because there will be a lot of people who live up Ludlow Lane, who when they come down the lane and turn, you know, to come back down tonight, to connect to Washington Spring Road, they're going to be looking down on the roof of this thing. There are beautiful views of the water as you descend Ludlow Lane from up top. It's really hard for me to believe that that is not going to be an obstruction to that. And that is, speaks so much to the character of our neighborhood. I also like a forty by eighty foot greenhouse, that's monster size. It's thirty-two hundred square feet.
But based on the zone and stuff, it's minimal.
Say it again.
It's a minimal increase based on the zone, so just so we're aware, right?
Okay.
Okay.
We're, yeah, if we, then we can talk about hardship, and you're supposed to have to show a need a hardship, correct, to get a variance?
That depends on the type of variance, but I mean
That's the way I understood it, is that it's part of the definition of asking for a variance, is that there's a hardship that without the variance, you can't whatever, use your property, I'm not sure of the full terminology, maybe your attorney here can talk to it.
Yeah, there's two types of variance, is a use and an area, this is an area variance, not a use. What you're talking about is a use variance, that does not apply to this application.
And they don't need a use variance?
No.
Area variance.
Only area. Well, then I'm going to stand by it, make it a twenty by forty and don't encroach. It's forty, forty by eighty is, yeah. It's huge, and I don't think it speaks to what an R-eighty neighborhood is, you know, wants as part of it, but that's it, thank you.
Want, the audience, rest of the audience wish to be heard?
Um, I don't know, maybe.
I can't help you with that one. I'll do my best.
Um, Carol, Carol Baxter, I live at thirty-four Lawrence Lane. I solemn solemn solemnly swear. I do. I live further on Lawrence Lane than Leslie and Julie do, and I can just attest, I know you said that this is, the the water flooding and the trees coming down is not part of this situation that we're talking about, and that the proper board will deal with that. I just want to make sure that the proper board knows that there's a problem with this, because I drive by their houses every day, and there's flooding from this, trees being cut down. I mean, you saw how steep that hill is, it's, so I don't know what the plan is, I know Walter said that they have a they're thinking of what they're going to be doing to plant. I don't know if they're planting on the hill, or if they're keeping that open, there's, it's just mysterious, so right, I just want to make sure that gets to the proper, how do we do that, get to the proper?
So I think, so let me ask, so you're going to go in front of the store board, and have you gone through your architectural review board?
No, no, I, I
Do you have to put plantings?
I think we just have to do a hay board.
Hay board, okay. And then you're submitting a planting or plantings or
Well, this, what we showed earlier is a preliminary section of the site plan.
Which
It's not, it's not the final
No, because it doesn't have the section that we're
That was clear.
It doesn't have it, I mean, we, we're really, we're really just I'm sensitive to the cutting trees, I mean, basically, our load so far has really just been
Right, right, I understand that, I understand that.
I would only, I don't know how we recommend this, but I'm just saying, if you wish to voice your concerns, you can go to the building department, right, you can go to the historical review board meeting that they're going to go to next, and that should be documented as well, when that is. But I think those are your two options at this point.
But the historical really only deals with the the actual structure.
But you're not going in front of the architectural review board at this time. If if the property was to have to go, see, I don't know about what the plan is on the other side where you guys are talking about, right? So, and I don't think these people do either, but if they are to do some kind of plantings or something, potentially, it may go to your So, and I don't think these people do either. But if they are to do some kind of plantings or something, potentially, it may go to the architectural review board. I don't know that.
No. Acabore is required and they are.
That's right. That's right.
There you go.
So, historic board will have to deal with, as, as if they are acabore as well. But that's.
Maybe.
I don't, I wouldn't.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I just wanted to bring that.
All right, thank you very much.
Can I, can I say one more?
Not really. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, yeah.
Here, as sworn in.
Julie Katz, Eleven Lawrence Lane. I'm stills gonna tell the truth. Um, I really stand by the neighborhood not getting the alert to this and having their opinion heard. I reached out to a couple people, all of, the above Ludlow Lane doesn't know that this is going on.
Well, I believe the neighbors all can receive letters in the mail at a certain period of time, right?
They're supposed to.
They posted on the corners of the properties.
But they didn't. There's only four little signs on their property alone.
Okay. Can you answer?
Yes, we, we were given, we were given the signs and we were given a plan.
But let me just, just sit back up a second. Trying to, uh, convey earlier, um, this is, this is one lot within an overall property. The overall property, property surrounds this.
Yeah.
And, and what we, because we're dealing with one lot and one sort of zoning, um.
So, you took, you used, you used the code of your law in your favor.
We didn't, we didn't use it in any case. We just gave it a sign that you were.
I got to mark it. But you, but the neighbors, the buddy neighbors already did the same. The buddy neighbors is the same, right? I, I understand what they're saying.
The posters are not determined by the applicant.
No.
The posters are determined by our office. Based on the lot that's coming in front of the board. And only by the lot that's coming in front of the board. They're not allowed to post on anyone else's property. Neighbors or nothing.
Well, that, I get, right, so.
The fact that there's one, there's different lots that make up this one big property. So, it was posted on the lot that this was.
It was posted on the Ludlow, Ludlow, Ludlow Lane.
And later, I promise you, if they were received, people would be here.
Okay. No more. I, I don't know what to say about. I know that they go out and it's on, it's on the back of the document.
They get back with a map, will that be mailed?
They have to get mailed, um, so I can show you here. The letters were mailed, uh, they have a certain date that has to get mailed by. And mailed on the third of September.
Guess that's our mail system. Third of September.
All right, well. Is there a list typically?
No, no, I understand. They didn't receive it, but they received it Saturday, is what I'm saying. But that has nothing to do with it.
We know, we have.
They were mailed on the third.
Typically, it is a list of the buddy, right, isn't it?
I have the list, yeah.
Is it maybe here? I don't see it.
It's in the back.
It's in the back. And the list is created based on the property.
Yeah, that's the other thing. So. I did see it.
I don't see it either.
I just wanna see it if I could. You guys have a copy of it?
Yes.
That's what I wanna know. If you don't mind, just let me see that. I went to Eleven Lawrence, P.O. Box six ninety-seven, River View Property, nineteen Ludlow, oh, no, fifty-three Cedar Ludlow. Ludlow, forty-five Ludlow, thirty-eight Ludlow, Washington Spring Road, Washington Spring Road, Ludlow. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Went to twelve different properties within the area by, by what they, by right they have to do. One went to Texas. I don't know if that guy's coming.
He went to Texas. Oh, that's the owner of property.
No, he didn't come. He or she, I don't know. Sorry. All right. Um, anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Only once, twice? Anything else from us? Anyone? No?
Would, um, would your client be opposed to making the greenhouse smaller? To, to appease the neighbors?
We could certainly communicate that. I, I, I can't.
Right, I know. They have to be here to, right.
We know, we know. They, um, they have another property in Texas that has the same size for use, but, but, um. I mean, they, they're used that size for what they.
Right.
Would you be able to ask them?
Yeah, no, absolutely. No, we can ask.
But I mean, that would mean asking for continuous.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Ask them this minute?
No.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, as far as the variance, yes, I mean.
Really, the client will continue.
Right.
I mean, if, if it were possible to be approved.
Thousand, it's like. We can't make it a part of any decision, so I don't know how we do that.
Right.
And it's not, and as one member of the board, it's, it is a minim, it's minimal in regards to what we previously approved.
Right.
I mean, I, I would, I would say.
I mean, the reality is that there were not property lines. If you're a property, we wouldn't even be talking about.
Mm-hmm.
My sense is that they would be fairly adamant about running.
Well, okay, I'm good. I, what did I say? Make a motion, pause.
Second.
All favor? We're gonna make a decision.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, for all three applications today, based upon the testimony heard by this board in the ZBA number twenty-five dash nineteen, applicant Varshavsky, ZBA twenty-five dash thirty-nine, applicant Maroni, and ZBA twenty-five dash forty, River View Property Holdings LLC. Uh, for all three, based upon the testimony heard by this board and the facts as presented in the application, submission, and in the record, this application is exempt from environmental review under State Environmental Quality Review Act pursuant to SECRE regulations six seventeen point five, C one, two, eleven, twelve, sixteen, and or seventeen. If you have no questions or comments, a board member may adopt my legal opinion as a motion.
All favor?
All right.
You really, you really don't. It's a legal matter.
Okay, um, you go ahead.
Um, I make a motion that we approve the application of Mikhail Varshavsky for, um, the pool command or your yards. And they did amend their application for the command. Going on, enough, no cooking, that is in the addition and there are no. For hood and adverse environmental effect.
Second.
All favor?
All right. Okay, for ZBA, application twenty-five dash thirty-nine at Five Sunrise Lane, Pearl River, uh, for the ten-foot by twelve-foot shed in the front yard, um, on Orange Brick Road in Pearl River, I make a motion to approve this application. Uh, has overwhelming support from the neighbors and it fits in aesthetically with the neighborhood.
All favor?
Aye.
I get it. I usually don't. I did if I'm saying. Yeah, sorry about that. Um, so, ZBA number twenty-five dash forty. So, based on the testimony that we heard, based on the view of this property and, um, the elevations of the property, the neighbors, the inability for the neighbors to see from any of their property, the location shown to us, the views, the client, I make a motion to approve the FAR and, um, the variance for the setback at this. All favor?
All right.
Make a motion, pause.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks for coming. Did you get it?
All right. Well, next week for planning board, I'll be there.